Mr. Pfeifer, I'm about ready to get the sergeant-at-arms. Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council August 10, 2020 workshop, and call upon Kristen Rush for roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Record will reflect all of council is present with Mr. Marriott appearing remotely as he was authorized to do. With that, we have two workshops for us this evening. The first is a discussion of the ordinance chapters 18 and 42, adopting the 2018 International Building and Fire Codes with amendments in adopting the state electrical code. So Ms. Gillis is acting city attorney. Would you like to introduce this item?
City manager.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry to insult you that way.
Oh, no.
To make you an attorney. How rude of me.
No, it happens. Tonight Rita Van Horn, the deputy director of community and economic development, will be leading this topic.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Some of us have done this before. Some of you have gone through the code adoption process before. And I've been up here going through different code amendments and things like that. And I'm going to do the same thing again tonight, try not to bore you too much because it can get pretty deep in the woods with technical things. But I just wanted to give you all just a quick little history about codes and how we get here because some of you probably, this is your first experience with this. So we have model codes which are books that are written by national organizations that cover technical aspects of the code. And they are published about every three years. Actually, they're published every three years. And we come to you after we review them with our building code advisory board. We review our ordinances. We run those through our legal department experts, obviously, and our internal technical experts. We look at the changes that have been made. Some years, there's a few. Sometimes there's more. And we decide what changes should apply here in our city. And this happens across the country and actually now across the world where jurisdictions and other organizations across the world basically adopt the same set of code books with amendments if they need to. So it's becoming an international kind of organization that writes these. And so it makes it consistent and easy for contractors and builders across the world basically to build to the same standard, which is nice. Little history lesson, too. We adopted our first code here in the city of Arvada, October 10, 1955. And this is actually that book. So it went from this to a stack of books that's about a foot tall now. So things have obviously gotten a little more complicated.
Speaking of lawyers.
Speaking of lawyers. So we, like I said, we bring these to you about every, we used to do it every six years and skip codes. And now we try to do it every three years. And that's kind of what we're going to be bringing to you hopefully from now on if that's okay with you. I talked about our advisory board. That's an independent board that was appointed by you, actually. And they give us advice on a lot of different things. But code adoption is one of the main things that they advise us on. And they also hear appeals of different things, technical things. They also would appeal things that relate to licensing if that should ever need to happen. But it hasn't happened for a long time here. We also do a fair amount of outreach. We talk to our contractors, obviously. We've reached out to the Home Builders Association. We actually sent out, if you want to go to the next slide, just real briefly, we sent out over 2,300 emails notifying our customers, licensed contractors, and so on. We've had a pretty good rate of, as far as opening the emails and looking at them. And so we haven't really received any negative feedback on the proposal that we have for you to look at tonight. It's been pretty quiet. And I think part of the reason is that other cities around us have adopted this version of the code already. And so they're already kind of familiar with what's in the code. And we try to be as consistent as possible with other jurisdictions as well. So that helps as well, kind of level the playing field across the metro area. Go ahead, next slide. So I'm going to dive in and actually follow kind of the ordinance in the order it's laid out, starting with chapter 18, which is the building code. But it actually covers multiple code books that we adopt. In the beginning, we actually have administrative provisions that tell us how to sort of run a building department. We made a few changes this year to the administrative section, trying to simplify and streamline some things. So one of the things we changed was to cross-reference the role of the Board of the Building Code Advisory Board and licensing across the board. So chapter 42, the fire code, so licensing related to any fire code items that would come through the building department. And then chapter 78, which is the ordinance that is for municipal work in the right of way. Those licenses also actually would be reviewed by our building code advisory board, should they need to be. We added a provision to allow for permits to be reopened, finalized, and closed without additional fees. That really helps us, especially in times like these, COVID and, you know, for other emergency situations where a customer maybe couldn't get their permit finalized for a legitimate reason. And we just want to open it without any additional charges and get the inspections done and get it final, which we think is a good service for them. We also have made some changes to the licensing types, at least that's in the proposal. We've always had kind of a conflict between our three general contractor license types and the tests that they take to get those licenses and also other cities. So we're actually streamlining and making reciprocity a lot easier between the city of Denver and Arvada, also making sure that what a person tests for is what they can build. And so all of that stuff has now been aligned and streamlined. And the nice thing about that, too, is that we don't have to really re-categorize anybody or go through a lengthy process to put people in a new category of licensing, which is good. We also are aligning, or we'd like to align, the plumbing and electrical contractor licensing and/or registration, as sometimes it's called for electrical contractors, to align with the state licensing period. So instead of licensing every year in Arvada and three years at the state, we're just going to license everybody on a three-year basis because we actually reference the state license. So it makes a lot of sense to eliminate unneeded paperwork and process when they can just have a license for a longer period of time. Next slide, please. So I'll jump into the International Building Code. Now, this is the book we use for commercial buildings. This is the technical rules for building commercial buildings. And so we've made a few changes, not a huge number of changes, but I'll just mention a few of the highlights. We want to adopt Appendix C, which gives additional guidance on agricultural buildings. We do occasionally get requests for agricultural buildings. And this allows some additional lightening of the code requirements. Instead of having an intensely industrial building, you have an agricultural building, and it's really used for that purpose. It makes a lot of sense. We've added some, this is something I think you are aware of. Emergency sheltering has been a big topic. And we've allowed, we've added some provisions to streamline and allow emergency sheltering. A lot of times you'll see this requested from churches and other civic organizations. So now it's relatively straightforward to allow emergency sheltering in these locations. It goes through a simple review by building department and fire department. And we think it's probably certainly important and will possibly be requested more often to provide for some people in our community who may need some assistance. We've also had to make some changes, kind of in conjunction with the land development code. That used to somewhat regulate the home-based businesses that would be typically allowed. So the zoning was kind of the limiting factor. And with the changes in the LDC that now kind of open up home-based businesses, we've made some provisions to also just straight allow certain home-based business types and sizes in residential situations without throwing them into this commercial code. So it's a nice thing for small home-based businesses to be able to operate in their house without a lot of additional regulations. We've also made some changes, just simply to coordinate with the fire code. And we'll cover a few of those things when we get to the fire code section. On the advice of some structural engineers, one of them on our advisory board, and some new information that's been published by the structural engineers organizations, we've actually updated our wind speed for the area west of Highway 93. We've increased it slightly. And we all know that west of Arvada is windy. And we're finding out just how windy and making some changes to make sure that our buildings are built to withstand those forces. We've also, we're also proposing this year to actually get rid of some lengthy amendments we had in our ordinance related to swimming pools and swimming pool barriers, which would be the fences that keep kids from climbing in and that sort of thing. And so we're planning to adopt the swimming pool code that's written. It's not a terribly big change. It really just consolidates code requirements from different areas in different books and puts them in a single book for pool installers. And it eliminates, like I said, a big amendment in our ordinance. Next slide. So I'm assuming if you have questions, you'll stop me here.
Oh, trust me, they will.
We just keep rolling through these, then. So the next thing is International Residential Code. So this is actually the book that you use to build houses. And it contains a lot of different elements. Mechanical plumbing, electrical provisions are all included. So it contains all the information you need to build a townhouse, a duplex, or a single-family home. And so the changes that we're proposing, and you may have heard something about this already, but we're proposing to actually adopt Appendix F, which deals with radon mitigation. It actually would require that for new installations, new buildings, that a passive radon system be installed. And you might be familiar with passive or active and passive systems. A lot of people put them in when they sell a house and they've done a radon test as part of the buying and selling process. That's the most common way to retrofit in an existing house. But this would actually put the basic piping and collection from underneath the basement floor. And it would put it in while the house is being built so that it either would help mitigate radon by itself or you could add a fan at a later time to actually boost that capacity of removing radon. There's been a lot of information out from the county and EPA, of course, about radon. And we are in Colorado in a high radon area. So frequently tests come back above the EPA recommended levels. And so this will help, over time, take care of those new buildings being built. And that'll be supplemented by systems being put in as part of transactions, real estate transactions and things like that.
Ms. Ford?
Rita, where would someone get information on radon testing in the community?
Well, so the counties all have, from my understanding, from Jefferson County, they have information about testing and about radon systems. We, of course, can pass through the information that they have. Testing is, I think you can even get tests now at, like, Home Depot. They're cartridges or canisters. You open them up and you expose them for a certain period of time in a place that's, you know, not subject to drafts and things like that. And then you close it back up and you date it and send it in. And so they're pretty much readily available at home improvement and big box kind of places like Home Depot. I'm not sure. Some counties actually have programs where they will actually provide tests. They'll do, you know, events where they'll offer tests for a reduced rate or free. But I've not seen that from Jefferson County at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. Britta, I have a question about Appendix F. Does it contain anything that requires radon mitigation or installation of radon mitigation into existing residents if they're being remodeled or if there's a certain percentage being remodeled?
I believe, I believe yes. I would have to actually look that up and get back to you. I just don't remember off the top of my head. And I did not bring the book with me tonight. It is something to consider that, I guess it's a topic for discussion tonight, about possibly containing that to just new single-family homes, like some other provisions in the code, or contain that to only new buildings instead of remodels. I know that can get a little bit complicated when you're, you know, doing a small addition or something like that. Or we've also, in the past, done rules where it's, you know, the 50% rule. If you're not changing more than 50% of the footprint or something like that. I think we're certainly open to kind of restricting that to new construction because it is certainly easier to install that during the new construction phase rather than retrofit it.
Let's make sure.
Right. Well, and if you were to have to do that during a remodel, it touches off things you might not already be touching, like, you know, it needs to be powered. So then that addresses, gets into your electrical system, which may require then an update on your electrical system. You know, it's kind of one thing is connected to another, to another, to another. And it becomes much bigger than just a radon mitigation device. It can become, involve all kinds of things. Am I right about that?
It could. I think radon has probably a less probability because the power requirement is very low and you can usually find an outlet in the area and, you know, use it for that. But it's possible, I guess. I think more complicated is the fact that, you know, houses, if they have different levels, you know, you have a crawl space in one area and a basement in another area and a slab-on-grade in another area conceivably over time. That makes it really hard to create a system for radon mitigation. So I certainly think that it is, and plus the fact that a lot of these systems do get installed when houses are bought and sold. And so it becomes less critical, I would say, to have them be retrofitted in existing installations, especially if there's minimal work going on. I mean, I'm certainly open to whatever suggestions you have for me on that.
Right. Okay, sounds good. Thanks for that explanation. I would, just to weigh in here, I would be in favor of limiting that Appendix F to really just applying to new construction because I think it does just make all kinds of sense to install when you're building new. But I think it can also be all kinds of extra difficulty and expense and situations where it's maybe not so practical to do it when you're remodeling, especially if you're, you know, remodeling something else and it touches this. So anyway, that would just be my recommendation would be that we limit Appendix F to just new construction.
Do we have any idea from builders what the cost per unit is for putting in a passive radon system in new construction?
I don't have any new numbers. I know that retrofit applications are, you know, $1,000 to $1,500, really depending on a lot of different factors. So I would say it's probably on the low end of that, if not less. It's a pipe that goes basically from the basement floor all the way up through the roof and then ceiling of the floor and a few other things. I would say, that would be my estimate. I don't have an exact number.
Okay.
A few hundred dollars.
Very good. Thanks. And I would agree with Mr. Marriott that we had to limit it to new construction.
Okay, perfect. I'm happy to make changes to that degree if you'd like me to. I certainly am happy to do that. I think I can make it pretty streamlined. So another thing that has happened with this version of the International Residential Code is that we've actually taken and put some data together from different sources and put them in a single design table. So now if you're designing a house, you can go to a single table and kind of find all the criteria you need for the design. And that's just a convenience. We've also made some minor modifications. Again, the wind speed is located there. And we talked about the wind speed earlier. And some additional tweaks to some of the energy code requirements as well. Next slide, please. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Parker to talk about residential sprinkler systems. And I'll be back in a little bit.
Can I just ask one question before you step away?
Sure, certainly.
Sorry. With regard to wind speed, is that to handle, like, because out on the west side of town, we'll get hurricane-strength winds, like 100 mile an hour. Is that for, like, roofs and windows? Is that what the code is intending to cover?
Yeah, it covers the entire structure. So it covers walls, you know. Anything that's vertical takes the brunt force of a wind.
Right.
And we have such interesting topography out in the west side. And we have valleys in other areas that cause these wind, kind of high wind speed areas.
Right.
So, yeah, the entire building essentially uses that number, which has been increased from 143 to 150, to put into the design calculations and then come up with the minimum requirements for those elements of the building.
So technically, my house should be built up to 143 mile an hour wind?
Well, your house, I think, is east of Highway 93.
It is, but it...
Just barely.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, you have to have a line. But it's 136 east. So the difference is not that great.
Okay.
But it does make a difference in the calculation.
I just need those numbers to help my wife. I can tell her it's, we're okay. We're okay. Because there are some scary nights.
But it is all of those elements. Yeah, it's windows, it's roofs, it's all of those things.
Okay, thank you. I actually had a quick question before you push out there. On the pool criteria, you know, you put a fence around it as part of the barrier. Was that removed? Something I read, I thought, that said the fence, but you have to have a cover instead or something like that.
So technology and modern materials are great. So they now have pool covers that actually are designed as barriers. I mean, anything relies on a human to shut the gate or put the cover on. But pool covers now are so sophisticated that once they're on, you actually don't have anybody, you can't fall through it. You can't fall in the pool because of the way that they're constructed. And so the cover actually is the barrier. And so if there isn't another requirement zoning-wise or a requirement for a fence for another reason, the pool cover could be the barrier.
Okay.
So you could see fences conceivably being less and less.
Okay.
Same thing for hot tubs and that sort of thing.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. My name is Stephen Parker. I'm the fire marshal at the Arvada Fire Protection District. And with me tonight is our vice president, Bob Leveridge, and our fire chief, Mike Piper. I'm going to do a quick presentation. And I believe they have a couple of things that they want to comment on as well. My presentation here is purely directed at the provision for residential fire sprinklers. The information that I'm going to present to you tonight is all encompassing of the fire problem that we have within the city of Arvada, the possible downsides to residential sprinkler systems, the benefits. And all of this is based upon a lot of research and data, both nationally and locally. Next slide, please. So this particular data that's showing up on the screen right now has been compiled over the last four and a half years. The majority of the fires that we see as the fire department are contained within single-family residential structures. This does not include multifamily. If you see the top purple line, there's 117 fires in that four and a half year span. Out of that 117, the total amount of fires that we have seen in all residential and commercial accounts for 190 fires. Unfortunately, within the city of Arvada, we have had our fair share of fatalities. As you all may be aware of, you know, the three residential fires that we've had in that four and a half year period, that accounts for 87.5% of our fire fatalities are in single-family structures. An interesting statistic that I found, approximately, Arvada, the city, is about 2% of the overall Colorado population, where we have a disproportionate percentage of fire fatalities nearing 7%. Next slide, please. This data here is showing us some statistics based around the fire loss in monetary values. So on the left-hand side is our 2016 data going over to end of June of 2020. Throughout that four and a half year span, we're averaging about $1.5 million in both property and content loss. As you see, in 2017, we had a significantly high year where that was over $3.5 million. When we break this down into individual fires, the average fire is costing a homeowner $59,000, where the city of Scottsdale, Arizona, has had residential sprinklers as a requirement for over 20 years. Their average fire loss right now is just over $2,100. A vast difference. Next slide, please. So as Rita already addressed, you know, the requirements of the code, this requirement for residential sprinkler systems was first introduced into the 2009 IRC with a full implementation required in 2011. Historically, we have amended that out within the city of Arvada. And I do want to make the point that this isn't something that the fire department is proposing be added into the code. This is prescriptive minimum as the International Code Council has deemed necessary. Next, please. So my proposal to you is to keep the minimum requirements within the IRC. Many people have asked me, is now the right time? COVID-19 has had a large financial impact on everybody. And I contend that we need to look in the long term. You know, other people have said, well, fires that are occurring right now aren't in the new homes. I agree 100%. We don't have as many fires statistically in newer constructed homes. It's in the older ones. But eventually, Candela's, Lyden, all these newer communities will eventually become old. We're looking for 10, 20, 30 years down the line with these systems. And up here is just a list of some of the surrounding communities that have adopted or maintained the residential sprinkler system requirement within their adopted residential code.
Ms. Ford's got a question for you.
I just wanted to go back to your comment on the cost of the fire. Is that taking into consideration that building costs are the same?
Yeah. So the way that we assess the dollar losses, we had to come up with some sort of system to determine what the fire loss is. We've consulted with numerous construction companies, primarily the companies that do restoration, to kind of get an average on if there's fire damage, what's the cost to do a remodel of a bedroom, a kitchen, a living room, a garage? And then for smoke damage, heat damage, we broke it up into different types of damage. That includes the water damage from putting the fire out. And what we do, once we get a fire, we take the assessed value from Jefferson County and we do our conversions to put it up against, this is what our anticipated loss is versus what the actual cost of the home is to date. We do some spot checks periodically with insurance companies. And I don't have a number for you offhand, but our numbers are consistently lower than what the insurance companies are estimating as the actual loss of the fires.
And then you talk about, well, you didn't actually mention, but what is the reason for most of the fires occurring? And you mentioned that they were occurring in older homes. So can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Part of that has to do just with our building inventory. We have a lot more older homes than we do newer homes. Some other things that we've taken into consideration is, you know, the mechanical system of the building and the electrical system. Obviously, the wiring from 1970s is vastly different than we're doing today. And the thing that changes it the most is the human interaction with your house. Some people are DIYers that like to go in, I don't need to have this permitted. I don't need a contractor to do this. And they'll go in and do their own work. And that's where we're seeing some of the fires. But electrical systems account for a large number of fires right now. But our highest occurrence is within the kitchen. That's where we're seeing the most fires.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. So I was just wondering if you've calculated at all the cost of water damage to the sprinkler system? Should that be faulty or break or have some freak accident and go off? And that's, I know, especially on a second floor of a building, you're talking about water damage, just incredible amounts of money.
Sure. You know, unfortunately, I don't have any local statistics for that since we have less than 10 that I'm aware of either installed or being installed. The city of Scottsdale, like I said, has had these for greater than 20 years. And it's in a forthcoming slide, but they've reported greater than 90% of the homeowners not reporting any leaks within their systems. When they have tens of thousands of homes with these, that's a pretty good success rate. But I don't have any numbers to show the dollar value or loss.
So 90% don't have leaks, but 10% do? That's a lot.
It can be, yes.
And water damage is incredible. I just, you guys know my hesitation. I won't, you know, stick with that. But that's just something I wanted to say out loud because it is a hesitation that I've had, just having experienced that
Absolutely.
faulty, broken sprinkler system in my facility.
It's something to consider. Like I said, I'm not going to give a one-sided argument on this. I want to try and give a full circle view of the pros and cons of this system because it isn't without certain faults, potentially. But I contend that there's more benefits than the occurrence of accidents.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. Actually, just carrying over from the mayor pro tem's questioning. Do the fire sprinkler systems have a higher activation threshold than the smoke alarm? Because I won't lie, my smoke alarm goes off every time I burn the bacon, and it really drives me crazy. So I am loathe to think about a sprinkler turning on me every single time I get distracted and the bacon burns. So I'm just curious about that. Do they have a higher threshold where you can turn them off or something like that in order to prevent the water damage?
Yes, they do. And that's the fundamental difference of a sprinkler system versus a smoke alarm. Where a smoke alarm is going off of... Where a smoke alarm is going off of the smoke produced from, you know, the, the bacon that you're cooking or somebody's burnt toast or popcorn, where sprinkler systems are purely based on heat activation. So you're going to have smoke in a fire, you're going to have heat. We're looking at ceiling temperatures of greater than 150 degrees before that sprinkler system will activate.
Wonderful, thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, next slide, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Marriott had a question. Sorry, John.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question about the statistics you give between what the cost of a fire is here versus the cost of a fire in Scottsdale. And I'm struck by a couple of things. One, I would wonder if you have any data from places that are more like how we are. My, in my time that I've been to Scottsdale, Scottsdale is significantly different in the type of buildings and the way they build and, you know, very different than we are here. So I wonder if you have any data that's a little bit more analogous, maybe from somewhere like Westminster or superior places like that that have, have accepted this.
Sure. And, and with those other jurisdictions that have adopted this, Westminster being one of the ones that were the early adopters, unfortunately, I did reach out to the Fire Department over there, and I have not been able to get that statistic to whether they've evaluated the loss based on them instituting residential sprinklers back in 2013, I believe it was. I would like to give more local statistics if I can, but Scottsdale, having had this adopted for decades, that was the best thing I could come up with at the time, but I can definitely look into that further.
Okay, thank you.
There you go, go ahead.
All right. All right, so a few facts, some additional facts about residential sprinkler systems. They aren't going to activate unless they're needed. Yes, there are some times, based on some others' experience, that there, there can be, you know, something rogue that hits the sprinkler and activates it. It, it doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. One of the, the key things with residential sprinkler systems is, on average, they're going to be putting 28 gallons per minute if two sprinkler heads activate. So let's take a fire condition, it's going to be putting 28 gallons per minute on the fire, where when we come, we're going to be putting 200 gallons of minute, per minute on the fire, which is a significant increase. And arguably, by the time we get there, the fire's bigger and it's going to require more water. Some of the, the other benefits is fire sprinklers operate 94% of the time. You may ask, why is it only 94%? There are some circumstances where people tamper with the systems, people shut them off because they don't want to have it on, whatever the case may be. The other part that accounts for that is the temperatures, the heat from the fire doesn't get hot enough to activate the sprinkler. So if you have a, a fire on your, your, your range, and you're able to get baking soda or a lid on that before that ceiling temperature reaches 150 degrees, it will not activate the sprinkler. But when they are called upon, they are effective 96% of the time. 96% is a pretty good success rate. That 4% can also be accounted for what we call incendiary fires or intentionally set fires. If they grow so fast, they, they can overcome the system. Unfortunately, we don't have or have not seen that problem within this community for people setting houses on fire. Going to the potential for leaks, the sprinkler systems are tested to a much higher standard than what we see in our normal domestic plumbing. Bree may be able to give me that statistic, but I know that sprinkler systems are tested at 200 pounds. So they fill it up with water and pressurize it to 200 pounds for two hours to make sure that there's no leaks in the fittings and there's nothing wrong with the system before everything else is moved in. Next slide, please. So here's kind of a, a visual overview of what residential sprinkler systems are. This is what it's not. This is what you're going to see in a, a normal commercial setting or a large commercial setting. This is like a sundine type of sprinkler system. Next slide, please. This is going to be the most common type of sprinkler system that you see, and I do apologize, it is a little dark. These are going to come in, in the basement, this is a NFPA 13D sprinkler system that's tapped off of the domestic water. So your domestic water line comes into your house, they'll tee off of it and put this CPV setup right inside of a wall joist or right outside of a wall. Additionally, there's another option, instead of tapping it off of the domestic, you can have a separate fire line installed. I'm not necessarily a proponent of that, it's just another option. Next slide, please. This is a NFPA 13D system as well, but it's a tank and pump. It is self-contained, it is not tapped off of the domestic, nor does it have its own fire line. The tank is usually a plastic tank that's sized for 10 minutes worth of water, so we're generally looking at about a 300 gallon tank. And on the bottom there, that red little circle is a little pump, so that when a sprinkler system activates, that pump will take that water from the tank and push it through the system.
Ms. Ford?
So you mentioned this is for basements, what about crawl spaces?
Crawl spaces are not required to be sprinkled unless there's a fuel-fired piece of equipment there, and at that even, it's only one sprinkler at the location of that piece of equipment. Otherwise, a crawl space does not have to be sprinkled.
Okay, thank you.
And for clarification, all of these systems are typically located in the basement because that's where your water line is coming in, and then the piping will go up, however many stories that house is. Next slide, please. This is a P20, P2904 sprinkler system, or also called a multipurpose sprinkler system. That in newer constructed houses, they're using the PEX pipe throughout, you can see the, the blue lines, that's the typical domestic water that you'll see supplying your toilet, your shower, your faucets. These systems simply tap off of that, and they're, for lack of a better term, pre-engineered for the houses so that you're not having to bring a second system in or a second line that's is purely off of the domestic water system. Next slide, please. A lot of people say that sprinkler systems are not very aesthetically pleasing. I found this house here, this is a sprinkler house, and curious if, in the pictures you guys have, if you can spot where the sprinklers are?
I know, it's the little white disc in the ceiling.
There you go. Yep, so the, a, as, these systems are gaining momentum and getting more and more people to install them, they're trying to make them as aesthetically pleasing as possible. You can paint those cover plates, you can get them to match whatever your ceiling color is. Next slide, please. And if you can't see it, there they are. All right, as you may be aware, I've put a couple articles within the Arvada report late last year, early this year, and as I was going through one of them, I saw this graphic, and both in 2017 and 2019, as voted on by the community, public safety being number one. I know public safety is all encompassing, not necessarily just one facet of it, but this does play a role within public safety in our community. Additionally, it, it wasn't included in this graphic, but I've seen throughout the, the values of this city, working with developments and new construction, that water conservation and environmental impacts is a high priority for the city. I, I live here, I appreciate every one of these. What sprinkler systems can do for water conservation is it will lessen the amount of water needed to put out a fire. As I had said earlier, you know, 10 times less, and that means 10 times less runoff of the burnt material from a house, toxic gases. It, it's saving not only the, the environment, but it's conserving water as well. And maintaining organizational effectiveness to enhance quality of life of citizens, I'm going to address that a little later and what Arvada Fire can do if this is maintained within the code, how we can continue that organizational effectiveness and see very little impact from a procedural standpoint on these systems. Next slide, please. So here's some changes that we may see, both within the city of Arvada and the Arvada Fire Protection District. Currently, the, the standard meter is 5/8 inch by 3/4. Based on the, the research in systems that we've seen, a 3/4 inch by 3/4 inch meter would more than likely be adequate for these systems. There's a little bit additional cost, as you can see here, there's a $41 increase for the meter. The tap charge itself does not change. Same thing holds true for the wastewater fees associated with a 3/4 inch. Where the city will see, and quite honestly, the, the homeowners, the end user, will see the biggest changes if we have to go up to a 1-inch tap. The meter is more expensive, and the metro wastewater fees are significantly more expensive than a, a 3/4 inch. But based on everything we've seen, both locally here, within our Fire Protection District and surrounding communities, a 3/4 inch should be enough. And if it's not, we can always upsize the pipe from a 3/4 inch to a 1-inch after the meter, saving all the associated costs with additional tap fees and wastewater fees. Backflows are not required. That is a point that we can discuss, both the Fire Protection District and the city of Arvada. Based on the information that I see out of the sprinkler code, as well as the American Waterworks Association, if we do a combination, a multipurpose system where it's fed off of the domestic plumbing, or a standalone sprinkler system off of the domestic water line coming in and having a standalone, if we put a passive purge device at the end of that system, no backflow device is required. Therefore, no additional staff time or cost needs to be associated with that. If they go with those multipurpose or P2904 systems, there, there can be additional training, plan reviews, and inspection time for the Building Department, but those aren't as common. You don't see those nearly as much as you'll see the, the 13D systems. And when it comes to the 13D systems, the Fire Department will review all of those. And a point, I know you guys like having data, as Councilmember Marriott indicated from other surrounding communities, when I spoke with both the building official and the Fire Marshal over at Westminster some months ago, they said, from the time they instituted, they didn't see any decrease in development or permits being issued. They did put that with one caveat early on, they had a limit on the amount of development that could occur at the time, but since then, I believe that requirement is gone, and they have not seen any decrease. So in a five-year span, 2013 to 2017, they issued about 462 permits for residential sprinkler systems. Next slide, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question real quick, if you'd...
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question for you about a couple of these items on this slide you have up in front of you. The first one is, can you explain the, the backflow not required? I'm a little bit surprised at that when backflow devices are required on every commercial building now, and there's all kinds of situations, and fire sprinklers provide, you know, pretty significant backflow, or, or they can provide pretty significant backflow risk. So do you want to just delve into that a little deeper?
Yes. So a, as I indicated, with the, the multitude of system types, there's different options depending on which system type you, you select. So if there's a, a dedicated fire line for the sprinkler system, absolutely a backflow preventer would be required. But if it is tapped off of the domestic line coming in with a passive purge going from the end of line at the sprinkler system into the most remote toilet, that water will circulate, and therefore, the American Waterworks Association says a backflow would not be required. And then, of course, the multipurpose systems, it is the domestic plumbing for the building, so it isn't required there. But it is a, a point of discussion that I've had with the Utilities Division and something that we've been working on, because there are different state requirements that, that may change how the city views this.
Right. So I'll, I'll have a, a follow-up question to our building official about that here in a minute, but let me ask you another question. You had mentioned that it only requires a small meter upsize, and that if that's not enough, that then you can just increase the pipe size to make up for it. What are you, are you saying this would go for any house that would be built in Arvada, or is this just for some? So it makes sense to me that the larger the house you have, the more capacity you're going to need to be able to fit to, to, you know, feed sprinklers. And of course, the, the longer the runs and all of that will be, it seems like there would be a variety of pipe and meter sizings that would be required based on the design of the house or the amount of coverage the sprinkler system has to have.
That's correct. The, these systems are hydraulically designed, so they, they'll lay out the piping, select the sprinkler heads, because there's different types of sprinkler heads for, you know, say a 15-foot by 15-foot spacing or an 18-foot by 18-foot spacing that would require different pressure requirements, the larger you want that spray to go. The size of the house doesn't necessarily play into how much water is required, because when these systems are designed, they're, they're looking at the most remote room within the house, and they're, they're hydraulically calculating it for two sprinkler heads, because statistically, there's only two sprinkler heads that activate in fires. So we're designing it so we can get pipe sizes down, and therefore, the, the gallons per minute requirement, as well as the pressure requirement, as low as possible. We have a few systems within our Fire Protection District that we've seen in the last six months. They have been 1-inch pipe within the house. Unfortunately, I don't have any local statistics here to show them being tapped off of the domestic water, they're all tank and pump systems. But there's any number of variables that can change the demand of that sprinkler system. For our, our run-of-the-mill tract home, we're looking at probably 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, and that's about what Westminster's seen and what we've evaluated. A 3/4 inch tap onto the water line with a 3/4 inch meter would be sufficient.
Right. So I guess the question that brings up for me then, you know, because commercial requirements are significantly different than this, not even close to the same, brings up the question, is, is, is this type of sprinkling system that you're proposing that has to be installed in houses as they're built, is it made to just the easiest you can get in, or is it really made for the actual fire risk? And I get that, you know, fire risks are different, and a typical fire might be relatively small, but I think of, you know, some of our areas out west where, you know, a grass fire may sweep up to the house and more than two sprinkler heads need to go off. How, how are these designed? It seems like this is just designed to be what can be done off the existing infrastructure without actually looking at, at adequately sprinkling it like you have to do in a commercial building.
Yeah, so the, the requirements, as you said, are greatly different between commercial and residential. Each individual home still is designed for that specific house, that specific floor plan. Where we get some benefits is in the tract homes, the larger developments, you can do one design and it applies to multiple structures. But residential sprinklers have been around for over 100 years, even well before they've been required. So there's been a lot of research, and, you know, the, the data that we get as Fire Departments and report it to the, to FEMA, it, it is showing that the typical fires that we're seeing, you know, they're, they don't start big, they're going to start small and grow, and we can catch those smaller incipient fires before they become a big problem. And it, it addresses that concern of, you know, having to individually size everything. We have a pretty good idea of what your run-of-the-mill, run-of-the-mill tract home will require. Obviously, if we have these larger custom homes, as we have seen in unincorporated Jefferson County, there's one 10,000 square feet going in right now, and that still just has 1-inch pipe throughout the whole house. And then as far as your comment about, you know, a wildfire coming in and sweeping up the house, these systems aren't designed necessarily to protect a home that is overcome by an exterior fire. These are purely designed with life safety in mind and providing the occupants additional time to get out of the house, once a fire starts within that residence.
Okay, thank you.
How much more time do you need for your presentation?
I can, let's skip to the next, next part. I can, let's skip to the next part right there. Here's just a quick statistic, eight minutes, seven minutes?
Okay.
Okay. We can just look at that table down on the left-hand side. The national average cost of a sprinkler system is $1.35 a square foot. Westminster, over that seven-year span, is at $1.75 a square foot. And what we have seen in the fire protection district is $2.59 a square foot. Couple reasons for that. They have all been custom homes, larger than what we would see, as well as them not being in the quantity that we would see in larger developments. So there's going to be a cost savings there. One of those footnotes there that even the most expensive system that we've seen is less than 2% the cost of the overall sale price of a house. Next slide. So here's some of the code allowances that we can get with the installation of residential sprinkler systems within developments. We can narrow the roads. Currently, our minimum requirement is 24 feet. If we have residential sprinklers within a development, we can get that down to 20 feet, if not less. I know at one of the last workshops you guys had was discussing traffic calming. This will allow for more of that if so desired. One thing that can help with the overall water system is we require right now 1,000 gallons-per-minute required fire flow to fight a fire in a single-family house. With sprinklers, we can reduce that from 1,000 to 500 gallons-per-minute, and we can increase the spacing of fire hydrants from 600 feet between them to 1,000 feet. And what that translates to is potentially smaller main sizes, less infrastructure cost, less fire hydrants to maintain. One of the biggest trade-offs, I have listed here various IRC allowances. In the 2015 edition that we currently have adopted, in newly constructed homes, the underside of the floor joists within a basement have to be protected. And there's various ways you can go about that. With a sprinkler system being installed, you don't, no longer have to put the drywall or the spray-on protecting or whatever assembly they're using, and that helps offset some of that cost that you're taking, roughly about 50% of the cost of a sprinkler system away by just removing that requirement alone. Next slide, please. So what can we commit to? We can commit to low permit fees to reduce the burden on the contractors for this. We can do large reviews in batches for typical floor plans. Quick turn-on times for those plan reviews, less than a week, and we can do next-day inspections. As you see here, there's numerous benefits, but the number-one benefit of this system is to allow occupants additional time to get out of the house. Right now, in not necessarily just modern construction of houses, but the contents that we're putting in them, they produce larger fires, hotter fires. So we have less time now to get out of the house than we did back in the 80s, the 70s, that on average, we're looking at about two minutes to get out of your house. With these sprinkler systems, what they do is they provide you that additional time to get out of the house where it's a tenable atmosphere so you can safely get out. One quick statistic here. In our standard of cover for accreditation for our department, on average, we're getting our first unit on scene to a fire in seven minutes and 29 seconds. And that's just one piece of apparatus with three or four people. To get everybody assigned to a structure fire, we're looking at 13 minutes and 48 seconds. Quite a bit of time allows the fire to grow. Sprinklers, and I've got a 90-second video if you want to take a look at it, it really show you the difference between non-sprinkled and sprinkled. These things activate in less than 90 seconds. So the fire's out before we even get there. We're having to send less resources. We can have additional companies available for other emergencies within the city instead of sending five, six, seven, even eight pieces of apparatus to one incident. Next slide, please. So would you guys like to see, it's a short 90-second video?
Sure.
So as you see here, there's a small fire starting in the corner of a room, and you might not be able to see it in here, but this is a sprinkled building. This is the concealed head that we saw earlier. So at about 135 degrees, that cover plate will drop off. The sprinkler system will activate 150, 155 degrees. Where the top video is the sprinkled home and the bottom is the non-sprinkled home. And we're 50 seconds into the fire, where you can see the drastic difference between the sprinkled home versus the non-sprinkled home. And at this point in time, a minute in, you can barely see the fire on the sprinkled home, where in the non-sprinkled home, that fire's getting pretty big pretty quick, and your ability to get out of this diminishes pretty quickly. This is an exterior view of what that non-sprinkled house looks like. And this is at least the size that we're going to see when we come up to a residential structure fire. And quickly, top is what the aftermath looked like on the sprinkled home. The bottom is what the result was in the non-sprinkled home. So that's the video. And in closing, I hope that this information helps you determine what the acceptable level of risk is to our community. From an educational standpoint, not necessarily based on antiquated information, I'm trying to give a well-rounded view so that we can all come to a common goal for our citizens. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I come before you tonight as a board member of the Arvada Fire Protection District, but also, I'm a builder. I've been building homes for many years. And also, I sit on another jurisdictions Building Code Advisory Board. And I can tell you, as I, this code came around in '09, I was very opposed to it. I thought, this is really silly. We're doing a marvelous job of containing fires more than we ever have before. And I think that was really the crux of what many people were feeling. Plus, the costs we were being thrown at were, to us, that seemed very outrageous. We're looking at what a commercial system would be. This is not a commercial system that we're looking at for residential-type fires. It's much different, much less costly. Since I've been on the fire board, I've seen too many deaths in this community. My opinion of a lot of things changed when I've been to scenes where you know that there's someone in that building that is dying or is dead, that could have survived perhaps if there'd been a sprinkler-type system. There's nothing more heartbreaking than that. But on top of that, I've also realized that fires today burn four to five times faster and hotter than they did 20, 30 years ago. I've seen videos where they build a shed, two equal sheds. They put a 1970 couch in one, and they put a brand-new couch in the other. The 70s couch takes over 15 minutes before that shed is fully engulfed. The new, the shed with the new couch, less than four minutes before it's equally burning. Just shows you how much our contents in our structures create greater fires. And that's why our time for getting out is getting less and less. And then, I also look at some of the cost savings that we have. There's a number of codes that go away when this is enacted, which reduces costs to help balance out that cost of the sprinkler system. And your development codes can go down because of less restrictive measures that need to be attained. So from my personal opinion, what I have seen, it is time that we enact this. Yes, it's not going to help majority of Arvada residents, but the new residents, and that's all this would be required in, is it's a benefit for them. And I think more people see these, the more they would want it. And in that fire, I've seen the trailer demonstration, side-by-side, live. It's amazing how that, without the sprinklers, how fast that builds and continues to build, where the other side goes out very quickly. And one big point, they had a computer sitting there in each one of them. The one without the sprinkler system, that computer is toast. You will not recover anything. The one with the sprinklers, you'll be able to, yeah, it's water damage, but you can recover the data from that. Little things like that make a big difference. But again, contents is what our biggest problem is, and a lot of what we're building our buildings with. There's a lot of glues, a lot of synthetics that are highly flammable. So I hope you'll, I want to encourage you to take a good, serious look at this and encourage you to enact this. It's at a point where we need to quit rejecting it and allow it to be part of our code, as many of our other municipalities around us have been doing. Thank you. And with us tonight, too, we haven't had the chance to introduce our new fire chief to you with all that's been going on, as we made the appointment to our new fire chief on March 11th, I believe it was. But we have with us tonight our new chief, Mike Piper, and we're very excited to have him onboard, and we have a new deputy chief also. And we hope to get them in to introduce them, so.
Good. Mr. Piper?
I have a question for your fire marshal.
Okay.
So you're free, Bob. So, I mean, I don't know how many bites of the apple we'll get at this, but one thing I wish we would have seen in here, and I think it would have been maybe even meaningful, is if you had a typical block, every sprinkler has it, or every resident has a sprinkler system. It's point, or 1.7% of the cost of the house. But then, you reduce the main connections. You've reduced the number of fire hydrants. You've even possibly narrowed a road. All those cost savings to the cost onto the builder would have been an interesting comparison to see what the cost-benefit is, just from a dollar's perspective. Not to put anyone's life, dollar to anyone's life, but if you're just doing business math, I would have been interested to see that kind of analysis.
I agree. And I attempted to do that in reaching out to some of the developers. The information that I was getting was not necessarily the information that I was getting. There was one in particular that was saying these sprinkler systems are costing $15 to $20 per square foot that were numbers that were coming from 20 years ago. In that conversation, I wasn't able to really nail down those specific points of, what would the infrastructure changes be if we looked at X development? I worked on this for a long time, but unfortunately, I didn't have enough.
Well, and I even questioned the $2, because being in a new build, when you use those PEXI pipes, and if you're sharing those with the sprinklers, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I would assume that would have reduced some heavy costs if you're already running piping through your house.
It can, absolutely. You know, the multipurpose systems are seemingly more cost-effective because the majority of the infrastructure is already there. It's just what we've seen, both locally and nationally, people are opting to go with the standalone sprinkler system, either tank-and-pump or tapped off of the domestic.
And I'm not sure I heard you say it, but I assume it's accurate, is that your insurance would be lower, I would assume.
It varies. You know, we reached out to five or six insurance companies that deal a lot with Arvada residents, and it varied from 1% up to 10%. So it really depended on the coverage that you're looking for, as well as the specific provider.
Yeah, and I think the research I've done on this has been more of, not that they start leaking, it's more that they fail to kick on. And it's not a large percentage. I think you've given about 5% of the time they may not have kicked on. Not that they leak. So I'm not too worried about the leaking part, but what maintenance routines have to be put in for this? And what kind of costs do those look like?
So with the residential systems, this is, again, a difference between commercial and residential. Once it's installed, literally, the only maintenance is to make sure that it's still on and that sprinkler heads are not obstructed. That's it. You don't have to have a company come out and check it every year. It's purely on the homeowner to ensure that it's turned on, and you're not blocking any sprinklers.
So when you say turned on, it means the pump or?
The pump or you haven't, because there's various control valves throughout the system that you haven't just gone on.
So you don't have to test those to make sure they still work or anything like that?
Nope.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions.
Thanks. Ms. Ford?
On the new buildings, so with the fire sprinklers, does it matter the square footage of the unit or building? We're talking single-family, right? We're not talking about townhomes or condos or?
Well, within the IRC, they have single-family detached, which would be your stereotypical single-family home, or a paired home duplex. And then, there's provisions for townhomes. Did I get that right? And what we're proposing here is to include it for all single-family, townhome, paired home, detached.
Okay. And, you know, you mentioned that in the newer builds, they have less fires than the old. Is that due to the fact that the newer have the GFI system or?
That probably plays into effect. And, you know, the thing that I can't speak to is we've had very few fires in these new homes. I can think of, off the top of my head, that I've been on probably two. Not to say there hasn't been more that I'm not aware of, but it just doesn't occur very often based on building systems and mechanical, electrical, plumbing, any of that stuff. What we're trying to mitigate with this is the human element. You know, we can design codes, and we can modify them to fit what we're seeing in our community. What we cannot get rid of is the human element and how people interact with their homes. And that's really where the majority of our fires, outside of an electrical system, but our cooking fires, our smoking fires, are the human element that we just can't write out of the code.
So you're referring to people dropping their cigarette?
That happens quite often.
Leaving a candle, burning and forgetting about it, and things like that?
Yep. Yeah, whether it's accidental, careless, it doesn't matter. It's that human element that codes cannot address.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gillis, do we know when this is going to be coming before City Council for consideration? Has it been scheduled?
First reading is next Monday, and the public hearing is on the 14th of September.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does that complete your presentation?
It does.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
You bet, Ms. Brayden, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. Sorry to keep interrupting. I have a question for the presenter, and I'm sorry I can't see your face, but you mentioned that a developer could potentially take advantage of some savings or some ability to do things differently if they were to sprinkle all of the houses in their development. Have any of them chosen to do that, or is there anything that would stop them from doing that today?
There's nothing to stop them from doing it right now. I try as hard as I can on every development review that comes across my desk to get them to do it. It seems as though, you know, maybe it is some of that antiquated thought process of not only the cost, but the effectiveness of these sprinkler systems. But they're just used to doing it without it. But I try every time, but no, nobody has voluntarily said, I'm going to sprinkler my entire development.
Right. And so have you guys tried to do anything to, you know, public service awareness or any work with that community to try to encourage them to do it voluntarily besides, you know, having us impose it on them to have them, have them, if there truly are benefits to them, have them realize and see those benefits and then take advantage of those benefits?
You know, we can provide education to anybody and everybody, you know. It gets difficult with, you know, the number of developers. It's hard to be proactive with a developer that may or may not be building within this community. So when I see a development plan coming across my desk, we always try and, you know, explain to them the benefits because inevitably, our road widths are going to be a point of discussion, two points of access. It's a pretty small requirement to require two entry points into a It, it's a pretty small requirement to require two entry points into a development. When we have 30 homes or more, we have to have two remote entrances and that's probably where it comes up the most, that we say, "If you put residential sprinklers in all of these units, you no longer have to construct this second point of access and you can reduce the width, you can increase the spacing of, of hydrants from six to 1,000 feet."
I, I don't buy into that argument frankly, because there might be other reasons we want a second point of access, there might be other reasons we want wider roads. I don't just see us automatically, you know, increasing density or, or making those other changes to, to accomplish this. It's no secret I've been opposed to this from day one and probably, we still have a public hearing, but, uh, you know.
Well, my, my question really just is along line similar, Mr. Mayor, to yours is, is, you know, I, I know we've seen some developments that, uh, that, that have some difficulties with those second points of access and, and whatnot, and I've never seen any, anybody propose this as a solution and I would think that the developers themselves, if that's, if this is a, a solution that makes financial sense to them or practical sense or anything like that, that they would be coming to us with that as a proposal, but yet, like the mayor, I don't believe I've ever seen that as a, as a proposed solution. And I wonder why you think, uh, developers aren't, aren't moving this way voluntarily? Is there something else about it that we're not seeing or not understanding of why they're staying so far away from it?
In, in my experience, it is the only thing I can really speak to, but I haven't seen in, in the last five years, a single developer voluntarily say, "I want to do this." So I can only speak to my experience and what I've seen and, uh...
Right. Okay. One, one last thing, one last little technical question. So if this were to be passed and imposed on developments, are you guys, would you guys be in the position of having to, uh, approve each individual house plan for this and then go inspect each installation of this?
Yeah, so on one of the slides, I, I said that we could do batch reviews and, and, um, if we take Candela's as an example, they have certain model types of homes within their particular development. And say there's 10 of Model A, 20 of Model B, 30 of Model C, we can do one review for Model A, one review for Model B, one review for Model C. We would still have to inspect everyone individually, uh, but those inspections, uh, are greatly different than a commercial one where we can do a, a residential sprinkler inspection in probably 30 minutes, based on square footage.
And are, are you talking about doing a residential sprinkler inspection mid-construction, after the plumbing is installed and while everything's still open, or are you talking about just walking through and do a, doing a final inspection when it's done? Or both?
So it, it would be both. Um, the, the midpoint, or that we call it the rough inspection, is probably the most important because that's when we put that 200 pounds on the system and make sure that there's no leaks, make sure that they installed the system as it was designed and approved. Uh, by and large, if that passes, the final inspection is just making sure the coverplates are on the sprinklers and it's turned on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions and I think we've still got some more presentation from our team. Is that right?
So I think Sharon Israel, who's on, uh, the online version, has just one slide. She wanted to mention a few things about the water system implications.
Hello, Ms. Israel.
Well, hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, members of council. Nice to, nice to see you. And I will keep this very brief, um, but I did want to take the opportunity, um, to share perspective from the utilities department. Um, Stephen had, had a chance to meet with, um, myself and my folks and several other members of the city team in advance of his presentation, um, to the building advisory board and, uh, and ahead of tonight. Um, so I've seen much of his presentation before and, um, you know, frankly, you've mentioned many of the, the same topics that came up in our discussions internally, um, around implementation especially. So, um, I won't go into detail on them again, again, I think we touched on a lot of this tonight, but, but what it comes down to is that water distribution systems are all unique and all, all the, the details in terms of how we would implement, um, this particular requirement would really need to be right-sized for Arvada and the way our current system is, is currently designed. Uh, you know, we can anticipate not only those tap size increases that we talked about, but potentially maybe even to upsize some of our lines because as, as soon as you upsize taps, um, as in Westminster's case, they've actually gone entirely to one-inch taps for their homes and that just creates other, um, hydraulic conditions that we haven't necessarily designed our, our, our city system for. So what I'd like, I'd like to ask council to consider is that if, if, if you'd like us to assess some of those impacts, um, from a quantitative perspective, get a better refinement on costs and implementation, we don't have that today, but if we had some additional time and, and council chose to delay the adoption of this particular requirement, we could take that on, um, as sort of a task force or stakeholder group. Uh, I'm going to try to come back to you with some more specifics. Um, you know, another example of, of what we could do with a little extra time, um, would be to, um, consult with some of the other folks, like we mentioned Westminster a number of times tonight. Um, you know, I was actually at the city of Westminster when, um, this was, uh, adopted back in 2013 for them and, um, I've seen a lot of, of sort of what they've had to work through, um, and I think that, that studying that and understanding that a little bit better, um, would, would help inform the policy decision here too. So, um, I'm also happy to answer any follow-up questions you might have. Other than that, just wanted to, um, to take the chance and, and share, share our point of view.
So, uh, our, our team's position is that we not, um, move on this on September 14th when we deal with the rest of it?
I think that, that it, it would help us all if we had just a better understanding of the actual, um, implications of how this would affect Arvada's water system. It's, it's really hard to say right now at the level of detail, um, that, that we have and that's been presented so far, um, to, to understand what, what, what the actual costs, um, both in terms of the capital and, and as well as ongoing operation would cost. Um, I think that, that, you know, maybe we're, what we've seen is that we just, we haven't necessarily gotten our arms around everything. Um, I can tell you one, one specific example, Mr. Mayor, would be from Westminster where, um, they have installed, um, backflow prevention devices on all the homes, as, um, uh, council member Marriott had asked a question about earlier this evening. Um, that, that alone has, has resulted in, you know, larger, larger meter pits, a larger cost, um, as well as actually annual testing, um, from, from all of the, um, uh, the, the staff that, um, have to do that for, on behalf of the city. So all of that, I think before council were to take action, what I would really like is if you want us to go in that direction, give us a little bit more time to get our arms around what that would, um, what that actually would, would cost us in terms of, uh, financial and human resources.
Well, I haven't counted to four on one side or the other on this issue yet, so we may have to get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What else do we have?
Uh, go ahead to the next slide. So I can finish up at the IRC here, we can go through the rest of this pretty quickly and then have more discussion. I'll go through this. So I'm going to go back to non-sprinkler-related discussions and just give you, um, kind of a summary quickly of the remaining, um, changes of note. So again, um, we talked about this, about this earlier, about, um, swimming pool installations also for single-family homes, would reference that new pool code that we were proposing to adopt, um, same requirements would apply. We also are proposing to, um, coordinate better with state daycare licensing requirements. I know that this is, uh, something where we've, for a long time, had a provision for, um, more than five kids is more of a, like a commercial home daycare and there's some other additional provisions that come into play. Um, we're proposing to then move that to eight kids being cared for, not including kids that live there. So you could have what is a common category at the state level, which is eight plus two, eight kids that are from other homes and then two in your home. Um, we have, and I was just looking back at some old, it's not terribly old, but some data, but, you know, we had roughly 100, a little over 100, um, daycares in Arvada that fell into this sort of nebulous category that was causing friction, that are these eight plus two categories. We had only four that were in the 12 children category, which would still kind of have some additional requirements, um, that would be, um, in play for a home daycare of that size, but we would like to align the categories with the state licensing categories up to eight kids and eight plus two would also fall into that. And that's the primary size, that's the vastly most common size of daycare, uh, in-home daycare situations here in Arvada and I think across the state as well. Next slide. Well, so that wraps up the, the, the code we use for houses, townhomes and duplexes. I'll move into the energy code. Um, we've talked about the energy code before, um, when we've gone through the code adoption and sometimes it can be a little controversial, but in this case, uh, there's not a huge difference between the last version of the code book and this year. This year's the 2018 version. Um, there's some minor changes to some insulation values, um, windows, for example, are a little bit more energy efficient. Um, it's quite a slight improvement. Um, there's some changes to commercial energy lighting efficiency, that's becoming a more common thing now with the, you know, automatic shut-offs and things like that. Also LEDs and other kinds of high-efficiency light fixtures in general are more predominant, so you're seeing things in the energy code that are requiring those more efficient fixtures to be used. Insulating ductwork, better. A lot of that comes down to just a little bit additional installation, insulation and then better installation methods. A lot of times, we're not having any really comments about the energy code because most builders in residential applications are already wanting to meet these requirements as part of a selling feature, so Energy Star and things like that are really common. So in, in many cases, what the builders are building exceeds the energy code requirements. Also, not maybe as often, but, um, high-efficiency commercial builds for, for these new installations are also pretty popular, so LEED and things like that. So energy code has become less controversial for sure than it used to be, um, when the energy code, energy conservation craze kind of came around. So we're seeing, um, not a lot of change in this version. Next slide, please. I just want to mention that we adopt this every time we go through code adoption, which is the existing building code, and it's just a book that basically gives us additional guidance for, you many times, uh, cases where there's additions or changes to a building where it's not a perfect, you know, one-size-fits-all and gives us guidance as to how to deal with those in a, and, and still meet minimum life safety requirements and things like that. Go ahead in the next slide. I've lumped these together, so mechanical plumbing and fuel gas codes, they kind of work together actually, to some degree. Not a whole lot of changes. We are recommending that we remove the requirement for a backwater valve, which is basically a valve in a plumbing drain system, usually in the basement. Uh, it keeps things from backing up potentially if you have a backup. However, they do, they are a mechanical, um, piece of, uh, equipment, basically. They're a flapper in a, in a valve and they can break and they also create problems when you're trying to clean systems. And so they're certainly not prohibited, but we've taken out the requirement that they be installed, um, as we've seen issues with those, um, long-term and, and, um, maintenance-wise and things like that. Next slide, please. Property maintenance code, we're not proposing any changes. I lie, that's a lie. We're actually fixing a couple of typos and things like that. Um, but, uh, the version is not changing. This is actually something that's, uh, um, the police department, code enforcement division actually uses and I'm guessing at some point they'll be coming back to you with potentially some changes and updates to this. Go over to the next slide, please. The, the swimming pool and spa code, I've mentioned this a few times, um, combines requirements from other codes and industry standards into one document. Um, barriers and pool covers are included and sometimes one can substitute for the other, um, which is a nice thing in many cases. Takes away all those amendments that we made, uh, and it, new technology is always being incorporated and so therefore the, the technical book specifically written for these, um, equipment, pieces of equipment, um, is a good thing. Next slide, please. So another thing, and I think this was discussed with you at a, a meeting some time ago, but we're also proposing this year, as it relates to our electrical code that we adopt, that we, um, actually reference the state electrical code. It's the same book. Uh, we had very few amendments previously and, um, electricians throughout the state, um, pretty much default to using the state code and they stay on top of when it's being changed and adopted. It's just the smart thing to do to save us, um, coming back to you on a more frequent basis to adopt a code here locally that we would kind of have to adopt anyway because of state mandates and also saves us from going through the, through the adoption process by just referencing the state code and when they adopt a new one, we adopt a new one as well by default, so.
Right. Ms. Ford?
I wanted to go back to the, uh, pool for, for a minute. Are you, um, are you saying that we're not going to require, uh, fences anymore because the, uh, covers are good barriers now?
So it really gives you the option. It says that a pool cover can be used as a barrier to prevent inadvertent access to the pool. And so it's really an option. I mean, um, some people buy pool covers that are just, um, they're not intended for a barrier, they're not intended to be walked on or prevent people from getting access. And they still put a fence up. I mean, it's really a, a choice, but there are covers that are available that are so secure that they provide, like I said, inadvertent access by kids or whoever might accidentally come upon a pool. They are considered kind of an attractive nuisance, so covering them also kind of can mitigate that a little bit.
So the reason why I ask that is because, you know, obviously there, to me, I look at two things and I'm not real familiar with the law, but I, I, it was always my understanding that you want to kind of protect yourself as an owner of a pool because, um, well, people could just come into your yard and, I mean, I'm thinking of hot tub covers. I, I don't know of any hot tub covers that aren't easily taken off.
Yeah, they do make them that are secured. So in many cases, I mean, in all cases, these things have either a key access or they're secured in a way that prevents, and these are not intended to keep, you know, people, adults, you know, people who want to, you know, I could take a knife and probably cut through a pool cover if I really wanted to, but they're intended to prohibit or to eliminate or reduce unintended access by people who maybe don't know better, like younger kids and people who are attracted to them because they're a pool and they're, they look fun. So it's not that you can't defy any barrier if you really want to, but for the people who you're trying to like discourage from getting access to it, you have a choice now. Uh, as a homeowner, you certainly could still put a fence barrier up. That would certainly be fine if that's what makes you more comfortable. You could do both if you wanted, but the code would then just require one method as a barrier.
Yeah, because I, I was just thinking from a legal aspect too, you know, in, from protecting yourself as a pool owner from people coming into your yard unannounced and something then happening, you know, what's the liability? I, I think you'd still probably have li- liability regardless of whether you had a pool cover or not.
Yeah, I don't know. I think that's a decision you think about before you get a pool, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not sure how you could prevent any access ever from somebody who really wanted to get into it.
Okay. Thanks.
Call him Darwin Awards.
I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a discouragement, it's intended to be, you know, to keep people from accidentally getting into it, but there's nothing that can prohibit people from who really want to get access to things, to get access. It's the human factor again. Um, so next slide, I think that's, I think we're done. So, next slide. Oh, no, we're not done, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to encourage you. This will be fast. Fire code is also, which is chapter 42 of our ordinances, this is a one-slide thing and actually Stephen's going to actually come back up and talk about this a little bit.
This will be much quicker than the last presentation. So pretty much everything, uh, we're proposing here is administrative or providing additional clarification throughout the fire code. Uh, by and large, all the amendments being proposed for the 2018 exist currently within the 2015. So no, nothing major being changed with the exception of a couple items up here that Brede had already talked about. I have it called sheltering in Group A occupancies or the emergency sheltering in, in churches. Did that so that the two codes would align. Uh, the next part is fire department access to buildings undergoing changes of occupancy. Where we primarily see this issue is land being annexed in to the city from Jefferson County where, uh, it's being used as X occupancy and then now it's being used as Y occupancy. We need to be able to reevaluate the fire department access to that building. Uh, the next one is, uh, fire line installed in multi-tenant buildings. Um, historically, our inspectors, almost any time they- Historically, our inspectors, almost anytime they go out to an office warehouse-type building, light industrial, industrial uses, they go in there and they find what's called high pile combustible storage without a sprinkler system. When we get to that point, they have to add a sprinkler system, reduce the height of their storage, or find another place to go. So, what this does is it allows a fire line to be installed, no sprinkler system installed. It's purely just a fire line into the building so that if an occupant goes to the point where they have to be sprinkled, there's less infrastructure costs that have to go into that building retroactively. It's much easier to add a sprinkler system on. The next one is water barrels being prohibited from use for structural stability of tents. These are the temporary tents we see at almost every special event throughout the city, and it's not the ten-by-ten pop-ups, it's the, it's the big tents that aren't designed for water barrel use. If we take like a twenty-by-thirty tent, I think it's something like eighty water barrels, fifty-five gallon water barrels that would be required to secure that, which is inadequate, and it's not realistic. So, this is just prohibiting the use of water barrels, and they'll just have to stake it per the manufacturer's recommendations. And then the last one being proposed here is going back to the prescriptive code. It's aerial apparatus access roads and the proximity to the building. What we've seen in a lot of these townhome developments, down the alley, we've got twenty-six or thirty-foot wide roads. That doesn't really provide us any aerial firefighting capabilities, and what that means is putting up the big ladder on one of our trucks to help put out a fire. What this requirement does is requires a minimum setback of fifteen feet for that access road. That can go, it's not around all four sides of the building, it's only on one side, so it doesn't affect every road. And that is the proposals for amendments to the fire code.
Thank you. Mr. Fiverr?
Could you elaborate on that access road? Because you just mentioned townhouses, because the alleys are twenty-four feet.
Well, it depends. So, when a building is constructed greater than thirty feet in height, we have to have aerial apparatus access roads, which increases that twenty-four foot to twenty-six foot. And that gives us the operational capability to set our apparatus up in an advantageous spot to either set that ladder up to rescue somebody from a window, or if we have a fire that's completely consumed the house, we can get that ladder up and put water on it from above.
So, does our current code say that twenty-four foot's acceptable? Because a lot of townhouses we approved are alley access only.
Currently, it's twenty-six foot wide is the width. This change is purely just the setback of that road. Instead of it being abutted to the face of the building, it has to be, that road has to be set back fifteen feet from that building.
So, I have two buildings on both sides, twenty-four feet between. Maybe, maybe this team can help answer. Ryan, or Rob, or, because I think most of the alleys are twenty-four feet, aren't they not?
Well, from my experience recently, most of the time, they can do a three-story, they've been trying to stay under the thirty feet, so you'll see twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-nine point nine nine nine.
Okay, because they're two stories, which I think, I'm trying to remember, I think they're all two stories right now, right?
You can even get a three-story in twenty-nine feet, thirty, I mean, just under thirty.
So, if they hit the three-story, okay, that's the difference. Thank you.
And by and large, this is really going to affect commercial, because we don't see buildings greater than thirty feet, and we measure it to the eve of the structure, or if it's a flat roof to the top of the parapet. So, they really try to design those pitched roofs to be less than thirty feet.
That completes the workshop presentation. Do we want to have any discussion as a council on this, or just wait for the public hearing, or what's the wish of council?
Just a question.
Mr. Jones?
Just a question about Ms. Israel's request to delay so that they can, you know, her team can do a deeper dive on due diligence. Seems like that would be helpful.
I think, I think it would be helpful. I'm still probably going to be opposed, but, but, you know, having more information certainly isn't.
So, you're saying just rip the Band-Aid off?
What's that?
You're saying rip the Band-Aid off? I don't know. I would tend to say that we ought to delay that and give them some time to look at it so that we have additional data, so we know what the true impacts to the system are, irrespective of, you know, how it may or may not, you know, fit inside of our rationale around what's good and what's not good.
Right. Okay. Mr. Marriott, do you have anything on that?
I do. I have, I actually have a question for Britta Van Horn, and then I do have a comment on that, so if Britta's still available, I'd like to ask her a quick question.
She's right there.
So, Britta, my question is about, you know, on your own house, you can get a building permit to do, I believe, anything. You can put in a new furnace, or a new electrical panel, or anything that requires a permit you can do, but as soon as you own the house, but you rent it out to somebody else, you're not allowed to get a permit for anything. Am I correct about that?
Yes, well, yes and no. I mean, there are some things that we have kind of decided that our landlord should be able to do, like a fence, you know, things that are not, there's no element of life safety to it. The way our, the ordinance is structured currently, and with the licensing requirements, a homeowner who's, it's their primary house can pull permits or whatever they need to. They still have to meet the same code requirements, they have the same inspections as anyone else, contractor or otherwise. I know we've talked about this, actually, I think the last code adoption that we did as well. The, you're correct. I mean, a landlord doesn't have, per our current licensing provisions, and even in this ordinance, doesn't have the ability without a license to do that work. They could certainly get licensed to do anything that they wanted to do to their rental properties, so there's that option always available, but without licensing, that's correct.
Right. So, the question I have, is that actually contained in this code? Is that in the administrative section of the code, or is that just a policy by our department? How, where's that contained?
Let me see. I think, in essence, I think it's in the ordinance in the administrative section. I don't know if, it's probably by virtue of not being spelled out as landlords having the ability to get permits, I think it's just homeowners can do this, and licensed contractors can do this, and it's silent on the aspect of landlords. So, that's how it's in the ordinance. I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay. So, the question I have, and I've been bringing this up for a number of years, but it seems to me that there's at least elements of that that are pretty counterproductive. I know one time I was faced with having to build a fence because a tenant brought in a hot tub, and then been informed I wasn't allowed to build the fence because even though I owned the property and I had built the last fence when I lived there, I wasn't allowed to build the next fence because I wasn't a licensed contractor, and it just seemed like an impediment for landlords to either maintain their properties, or they're doing all kinds of stuff without permits, neither of which are ideal. What we'd really like is for them to be able to do the stuff they can do, and we'd like them to get a permit for it, and we'd like it to get inspected, and, you know, follow all the rules. And so, is there a way that we can address that with the adoption of this code in some fashion, where we put in place the ability for people who own property to adequately take care of that property?
Well, certainly, we could. I think, I guess the only hesitation I have personally is that the ability of, when you, when it's your house and you live there, you sort of control your destiny to some degree. When you don't live there and control your destiny, it's sort of a different choice that you're making. And certainly, there are landlords and just people in general who are extremely experienced and knowledgeable, and have lots of skills in relation to the home improvement in many capacities. There are people who don't. So, I think we would need to figure out what categories that might fall into that, so what elements could a landlord do, what is maybe not appropriate, if anything, and try to define that. You know, I would look to you as council to give me guidance. It would be atypical for a jurisdiction to treat landlords differently than just a licensed contractor. It's not common, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't be done.
Right. Okay. I would see, I would just throw this out to my fellow council members, we may want to consider this either now or at another time. You know, we've had an amazingly booming economy, and we've had a very strong housing market, and so people have taken care of their stuff, but there have been times within our housing markets where it hasn't been so much, and I always hate to see hurdles placed in front of someone who's just trying to upgrade, or maintain, or update a property they own. And, you know, I think about things like siding, and roofing, and windows, and all kinds of things that require permits, that if done incorrectly, one should be, an inspector should be telling you, hey, that's not appropriate, you need to do it right, so you can pass your inspection. Number two, present no danger to whoever lives in the house. In other words, if the house were sided incorrectly, or a window were not put in as professionally as a professional might do it, you're not endangering anybody's life, you're maybe not doing the best job you could, but you're not, you're certainly not putting anybody in danger. I can understand some of the hesitation when it comes to things like electrical or mechanical devices that can cause immediate, immediate harm to somebody. And so, I can understand it for some things, but for some things, it seems like we ought to be encouraging our landlords to maintain their properties however is best for them. So, anyway, that's all I'll say on that. I want to go back, though, to the, to the sprinkler question and the issue that Mr. Jones brought up with, you know, what should we do there? Here's what I would think. I also lean pretty hard against requiring sprinklers. I think that there was a big, a couple of big contradictions in just the points Ms. Israel brought up, and the fire department brought up about whether backflow prevention devices are required or not, and pipe sizing, and meter sizing, and all kinds of technical issues that I would suggest are not even close to settled. I would suggest that what we do is, because we do need to adopt our new building codes, and it covers way more things than fire sprinklers, that we adopt these codes, and I would be in favor of adopting it without a requirement for sprinklers, and then that would give time for the city department to take a look at all the issues around that for the next adoption of building codes. And we do this about every third year, so it's not that far in the future that it would be looked at again anyway. So, anyway, that would be the course of action I would propose we do, just so that we can get this, get this done, and we can look at it in the future.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I was actually just wanting to echo the sentiments of Mr. Jones. I would like to hear the extra data from Ms. Israel's team, and to see what the more comprehensive impact will be, and that way, we can evaluate our decision from there.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, sir. Bouncing back to Councilmember Marriott, I agree and support wholeheartedly Councilmember Marriott's suggestions in regarding to changing the code now to allow landlords to be able to improve their properties. I think that's important. You know, we also have rental properties and always have to hire somebody to do the most basic things that my husband could absolutely do, but can't because of the way our code is, is written. So, now's a perfect opportunity to do that rather than wait three more years for, for the next code update.
And where are you on the sprinkler issue?
I think everybody knows where I am on the sprinkler. Let's kick that can down the road a little longer.
Ms. Ford?
So, since I'm not a landlord, I want to understand this a little bit better. So, what we're saying is, is that if you're a landlord, you personally cannot do the work on your own house. You have to hire a contractor. Is that the issue?
On your rental property.
On your rental property, correct.
Yeah. Well, I personally think that's ridiculous, too. I think that if a landlord is capable, and they're able to pull the same requirements as anyone else, and their work is being inspected as anyone else, then as long as it passes inspection, why wouldn't we allow them? I guess would be my question. You probably answered that before, though.
Well, like I said before, I think it's just a philosophy about, and it's not even my philosophy, I just think it's kind of standard practice, that when it's your own house and you live there and you want to do a project, you know the risks you're taking. And if you're a renter, and you don't have any control over that, you don't really have any control over the risks you're taking, is the quality and the safety and all that stuff. Granted, yes, there are supposed to be permits and inspections and consistently, consistency in meeting the codes. I don't, philosophically, I don't disagree that there's not room for a wide array of compromise there. I mean, you could take it to either degree. You could have a few things that you think are kind of non-life safety, and a landlord certainly could pull permits for those, and we could write that in. You could take it all the way to a landlord is treated just like a homeowner who's, you know, it's their primary residence. You could, you could do a whole variety of things, anything in between that as well. So, you know, you guys are the, you know, obviously directing us based on your preferences. This is, you know, not a personal thing for me. It's just, this is the way it's been for a while. This is pretty common in the industry and other jurisdictions, so we always shoot for consistency. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
Appreciate that.
Well, maybe we could get a little bit information on, on why that is the case. As far as the sprinklers, you know, most of our building is going to start happening now, I'm assuming. I looked at the cost, and, you know, the question was raised, well, why aren't developers doing it now? Well, in my mind, I'm thinking if I'm building a $600,000 home, and I'm adding 1.7% for a fire sprinkler, that's $10,200. Am I going to be able to charge more for that house, or do I have to eat that cost? I think that's really the case, and honestly, I don't think many developers are going to do anything unless they're required to do it anyway. I mean, there, it is a industry, it is an industry that is profit motivated. I just, you know, I think that if it's something that we feel we have to do in order to protect safety, then we do it. I agree with Mr. Jones. I would really like to see more information on the perspective of our water system and whether, you know, it's feasible, and I would hate to see us kick the can down the road because we're building now, and we probably should, you know, pursue it a little bit more if our fire department is recommending it. I think it's worthy of examination. Let's put it that way.
Mr. Fiverr?
So, this was the first topic when I got elected in 2011. So, it was the '09 code that we were talking about on '11, and I remember the week we were talking about it, two children died because they couldn't get out of the house. And so, you know, that was a hard decision, and at that time, I was against it because the cost benefit wasn't there. I mean, they should never put a life on any of this, but to the builder to recoup it. Now, I'll have to say, nine years later, and being a recent, well, shoot, my entire family has bought new homes out in Candellas, and going through that, I can guarantee you no builder will add anything like that whatsoever, just because they're all for, I mean, I'm fighting over a crown piece of wood on my deck with the builder, which is asinine to be a couple hundred bucks. I cannot even fathom them thinking they would proactively put anything more than what you minimally asked for into a house. So, the only way they'll do it is by a code. So, I, I can't make a decision or thought of where I would land right now, but I do need more information. So, I think, I think delaying it one more month or a few more weeks, just so that our team can get us that information would be good, but I want it collaborated with the fire district, because, yes, there's some contradiction a little bit with the data, but they're also looked at two different lenses, and so I want to make sure that some of the feedback I've given to you about the cost benefits needs to be collaborated with Ms. Israel's team. And I think if you can come back and present that, that would probably be a better discussion, because I think that would give us a holistic view on this topic. And this has been going on for nine years. This is not a new topic, and I think technology's changed in the way that they do it. Shoot, even fifteen years ago, probably even twenty years ago, they were still putting copper into the houses. Now, they're putting these weird flex tubes, which freak me out just as bad, because they can easily start leaking as well. At least when I look at them, I feel like they should be leaking, leaking somewhere. But, you know, so I think I would rather give it a fighting chance to discuss it a little bit more, and I'd rather delay it a month or whatever to give the team enough time to look at it. So, I want to come out of here right the first time. We've already kicked this can down the road for nine years, so let's try to figure it out one more time, and I think we'll have more of a holistic view of this, this time around, so would that be doable?
Councilmember Fiverr, I will need to check with Ms. Israel to see how long it will take.
take to review this. I don't want to present tonight that we can do it in a couple of weeks.
I can't commit? She's the one who wants to pull it off and delay it.
Oh, no. As far as how long, if you're asking for a turnaround time over two weeks, I don't think that's feasible. I need to get some information from her for how long it will take to do that.
Okay. She, just reminder, she's the one who recommended us to delay it. So, hopefully she could, I don't want to get it to where we're into the fall again and we get into the budget season and we start missing dates and we push this out further.
Fair enough, I understand.
So, hopefully we could do something soon. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay. So, I think the consensus is that we go ahead and move forward with the adoption of these various codes on September 14th, that we not have the sprinkler requirement as part of that, that we move with due diligence to have our team look at that in cooperation and collaboration with the fire department, who apparently have the ability to make lightning strike down on me right now, so.
Oh, that was me.
With the thunder.
That was me.
That's you?
I'm kidding.
And we'll see in the final analysis with that information, will there be the votes on council with that additional information to pass something or not at some later date? At the same time, I guess my sense and my input on the, I don't think we should just do a blanket, landlords be able to act as a homeowner in all instances. I think there might be a couple of life and safety issues such as electrical. But let's move very quickly on that as well in terms of resolution of that issue.
Understood. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Well, in addition, I think you said radon, new construction only. And I think, I think I get the idea. We certainly could do an intermediate, quick change to what's coming to you for first reading about the licensing to include things like roofs and siding and windows. I think I get the idea. We certainly could do that. And then, you know.
Do a deeper dive on electrical and?
Yeah. I mean, there's some, there's some ramifications on the state level because I think there's some limitations based on state law for plumbing, mechanical, electrical.
Great.
So, but we could do certainly something relatively quickly about the things that are more commonly maintenance related, get that done. I hate to say this, but the new code is almost already printed again. So, we'll be looking at the next one sooner than you can imagine. And so, we could either bring it back for some specific discussion about the few issues sooner or we could wait till the next code cycle. I think we can probably figure that out.
Great. Ms. Marriott, you've only been pushing for that for what, six, seven years now?
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, but it's good to carefully consider stuff.
Right. Okay. Very good. I think that completes this workshop item. Why don't we do a quick stand in place or if somebody needs a break? And then, we will, hopefully the subarea planning efforts won't be quite as lengthy.